And we will start off with any changes or additions to the agenda and I know there's one that didn't make it on, but we're gonna have Jim do the, uh, the five year plan.
Building maintenance update on the roof and there's a couple of other things on there.
Okay, so building, building maintenance update, um, and other business. And we're gonna put that as, um, item five in front of the administrative report, that was the plan. Okay, excellent. All right, any other changes or additions? All right. So next up, we will do approval of the minutes from August 11th, 2025, and I believe that was our, um, retreat, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from August 11th, 2025? So move. All right. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will take a, uh, simple voice vote to approve those minutes. All those in favor of approving the minutes from August 11th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, any abstentions?
I've seen.
Okay. Elizabeth's things. All right, and, uh, Megan is not with us today. All right. Uh, next up, we have public comment for any non-agenda items or announcements. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I just got, I'm opening up my spiel or reading that. Public comment is not legally required, but we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns over issues. Through these meetings, our board models for our students how to conduct public discourse and that the board and members of our community can approach controversial issues in a civil and constructive manner and can demonstrate mutual respect. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed for discussion. Please start by identifying yourself and what town you reside in, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. All right.
I'm Caitlin, say it again, and, um, I reside in Brownsville, and I have two students at ABS, one in second and one in fourth. And I'm coming tonight with, um, question. Um, just who is responsible for taking care of the grounds at ABS in the playground? Um, today, after school, um, there were random tether balls just with long strings and there were two injuries after school with kids just swinging them and my daughter had a rope burn. And there's a bunch of broken springs and the structure has caution tape on it and the field is in, kind of not been taken care of. So I'm just wondering, I've, um, my question is, like, in the district, who is responsible for taking care of our playgrounds? Because recesses, if you ask kids what, what they like about school, they'll often say recess. And I just, um, it makes me sad that our, um, and I also feel, I don't know who's responsible because it's also been emails about parents being responsible. And I just, we just don't have time to kick the playgrounds out. So that's my comment. Um. Yeah, what role is it to care for ABS grounds? Um, how, how do our tax dollars keep the playgrounds lovely and so our kids can enjoy recess to the fullest? I mean, there are a lot of great things at ABS, outdoor classrooms and everything, but I want the playgrounds to shine. Well, that's my comment.
Thanks Caitlin.
Yeah.
Um, who, so I know that there is a little bit of a strain, like the town, I think owns those backfields, but do we know who's responsible for the playground? Jim, is this one that you can, you can address?
Yeah, so since I started here, to my knowledge, the school owns, the school owns the, the school. The grounds, the fields and stuff like that outrun, outrun from, by the town. So the town takes, to my knowledge, the town takes care of, the town takes care of the field or hires people to mow or whatever the fields. The playground, the playground absolutely, absolutely is building the grounds, which is me, Jimmy Caffin, nice to meet you. And we have visbit come, we have visbit come and inspect it once a year. And what we try to do is we have a ticket system, so if there's a swing bed, like we have a little, we have a little infancy on order now. So as soon as we know that something is broke or needed to repair, we try to get onto it immediately.
And I can add a little bit, um, so we are in collaboration with the town and, um, I've recently spoken with the, um, town manager. I don't remember. Anyway, uh, we talked about creating an MOU to create some kind of consistency over time, um, because we can't find one. Right? It's just kind of been almost like this is how it's always been. I'm random. We do have funds and we put the funds in the school budget to pay somebody to mow the lawn. Um, and the school helps maintain a lot of those things, um, like the structure. When it comes to the outdoor classrooms, we've been asking parents and the gardens out front, um, we've been asking community to come help because there's not a real person in charge of those. The grounds, flower beds were created by a community member who was doing a project and they no longer are able to take care of it. So we're trying to, um, pick up those pieces. We have, the fifth grade is taking over the pollinator garden, so they're just starting to work on that. Um, the gardens in the back are each class has, um, a grade and we pay somebody over the summer to help support that. Um, so when we did notice, like, the area that's broken over there, we put a ticket in immediately. They came out, tried to fix it, couldn't fix it. So they're working on getting like stuff, same thing with the swings, the two swings that we had to have replaced. Uh, regarding the boxes, they should have been locked, so tether balls and things like that are not accessible after school. I mean, it's, um, we've got BTG who has access to the playground and then parents monitoring their kids after school. Um, so those actually should be locked so nobody can get into them. But I did come and notice that they were, they weren't locked, so I'm gonna have to just review that. So people don't have access to balls, the sand stuff and the, um, just kind of general play stuff after school. That should not be accessible to general public for all that reasons.
Am I allowed to comment one more time? I'm just concerned about the round swing as well, because that got broken over, I don't know, during summer camp or at the end of last year. So that was broken and then a new one is in place, but I noticed they can, kids can push each other too high. And actually, my daughter went really high and just fell onto a girl's head. And no one got hurt, but I was like, well, this swing wasn't safe. So I think that'd be.
Okay, I know during school, we always have somebody there monitoring and teach the kids what safe swinging is. Um, I can go over that with BTG too and make sure that they're on the same page with us.
The round one, yeah, I just didn't, it just seems different than the old one.
It is different. Yeah, because we had that one on site. Move that one there.
Thank you for bringing the chart, Caitlin. Um, any other comments, announcements? Community from the board?
I can spell, um, just on that subject, is there like a timeline for when?
Say your name.
Sorry, um, Liz Roderick from Brownsville.
Thanks.
Um, you have a timeline on when those things get fixed. I mean, they were broken all summers. They took like the, like, the time during the summer when it's like, hey, we need to go back. Is that a question for you, Jim? Because it just seems like.
No, it's me.
They were broken in June.
Well, it's definitely me. If I, when we get stuff through the ticket system, we prioritize it. Believe it or not, playgrounds are a high priority. Then somebody will come out, one of the maintenance people will come out and see if we have, we have the park someplace or whatever. If not, when it comes to me and I order the parks, then we try to get one as soon as possible. The key is we have to, we all have to work together to know what's broke. That, that sometimes we're going all the different ways, not excuse just the truth. We're going all in different directions and if we don't get a ticket, we don't, I can't check up on it. We don't know that it's broke. For the timeline, usually, believe it or not, we're pretty good at the turnaround unless we have a situation at Windsor also where we're waiting on a swing and we've got the parks three times and they're wrong. We've got, we've got to retrofit it, but the company didn't tell us. So usually that's, if we know about it, that's usually the only thing that slows it down.
Any other? Any other announcements, public comment? Right. So we are going to move on to item five, which we have updated to, uh, Jim's report.
I'm gonna share my screen for Jim. And this is, this is, uh, on the website. It's been on the website for, um, a couple of years. Yep, I'm gonna just scroll down. So this is your, um, preventative maintenance budget. And then down below are the capital projects and you can see for 26, 27, there are some items there that Jim's gonna chat about, um, the roof being the main point of discussion because it was brought up, um, at a recent meeting. All right, Jimmy, you're on.
All right, so, um, let me hear you talk about the need of a roof because of, because of, A, we need a roof. B, the roof has been kicked down the road because of PCB where Weathersfield, well, mine, to my knowledge, it hasn't changed. Weathersfield has been, was the first school pin marked in our district to go through PCBs. And I heard from them once and I have not heard a thing from them saying. And I think it's kind of like stolen out. So if that's gonna stall out, no matter, for whatever reason, we need a roof here, both for internal and external repair. To keep repairing, softing the fascia. And the shingles are so bad that the water's collecting right up, can't move snow, snow won't go off. It's gonna become a safety issue. So I'm asking if there's some way where we don't know about PCB, if we can get approval to put a roof on here so we can properly take care of the rest of the place. Because it's going to affect inside too. We stop the leaks the best that we can, but, I mean, we, we go forty feet up in the air to fix that fascia and we can do it every, every year. And it's gonna continue. The only other thing that Larry should have up there, part of the five-year plan is the state tagged us with the, um, entrance. But cracks in the tire and that.
Yeah, that's right here, right here. That's the ABS, yeah. Yeah.
The other thing I think, I believe we're in really good shape here mechanically. You know, we got everything. The only thing that Albert Bridge is gonna need, that we should be able to handle out of the budget, is that our controller on the air handler unit that runs the gym, Jennifer called me numerous times and says, Jim, it's cold. It's cold in the gym. And I go, yeah, the air handle is out, so I run out and I started and the controller's failing. So that's like forty-two hundred dollars, but we ought to be able to, I believe we can handle that out of our regular budget. That'll need to be part of the five-year plan. And if it totally goes, we'll need one tomorrow. So that, that's it. Yes, ma'am.
And so what about the, um, part of the back of the building by the?
By the door.
By the door, where the, where the ice jam was, that.
Yeah, I think, I think we can't properly, I believe we can't properly handle that until we have a roof.
Okay.
Because it's sliding off. What happens is if you look, if you go by and you see all the shingles curled up like a crow's foot.
Yeah.
What happens is it start, I believe it's still starting to slide. And then it gets up against the vertical piece of the building and with the resistance, with the resistance of the shingles, I believe it can't go any further.
Yeah, and I have a. The other issue is that the overhang is not.
Well, that's what, that's what I was talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the other thing is we could extend the, we could look into when we get, when we get to quote, we should look into a more of an overhang, so it doesn't just drip right down on the bill.
And that's the thing, that, I mean, that's what I was, I was talking about, the roof and the overhang and the part around the windows that was, um, uh, now I can't remember, I haven't been back there, but, uh, the part around the windows and the doors that were affected by, um,
Well, right now we got everything damming up and that water's running right back.
Water damage.
The water's running right back.
Yeah.
We're crashing not anything.
Yeah, the impression I'm getting, Jim, is that by fixing the roof, we're kind of, we're also alleviating a lot of these, you know, repair issues.
And if we don't, I can come back next year and say we'd like to put a thousand dollars into, well, A, B, and C to finish.
Yeah, but it's not so much we're alleviating, it's just that we're eliminating the problem that's causing the damage. And then when we fix the damage, say around a door and other rot, then it just won't rot again.
Yep, yep.
And, and so, I mean, I think, mind if I throw out a quick discussion on it or do you want to finish?
No, go ahead, I'm good.
Okay. Um, I think I'd like to take a step back and say, um, PCB wasn't the first pause on this. The budget upheavals caused by the state was the first time we had to kick it down the road. We didn't have the money, uh, because of what the state did. I, I think we've come to the limit of what we can kick down the road. It's, it's, it needs to be fixed if we're gonna keep the building. Um, if we're, if we don't fix it, then keeping the building is not a realistic because it's gonna fall apart. Um, that's just a reality of what happens when you don't have a roof. Um.
So just, just to get to some of the practicalities of this, um, so my understanding is that we have reserve funds that.
You do, right there.
This, yes. Yep.
So those are your reserve funds, um, this is, this is what's been done already. And so if, if you want to approve the cost of the roof, Jim thinks it'll be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we got, we're gonna have to give it there for him.
We'll have to put it out to bid.
Last school we got was in 2021 was like one twenty.
Yep.
So.
Would we need to?
I, I remember that.
You'd have to make a motion to spend the money at the capital reserve. We would put it to bid in the spring for, um, replacement in the summer.
All right.
And.
And we put that down in our, our motions at the end there.
You can do that, yeah, sure.
Um, only other question I'd have is the, uh, I mean, is the PCB issue, like how the state is overseeing that, is there any risk that that would ding us if we just went ahead and did this or does it seem like at this point, it's kind of?
It's, it's not funded, so I don't think PCBs are coming back anytime soon, but Elizabeth may be a more inside information.
I don't think the PCBs are a thing at the moment.
Okay.
Well, I mean, while we're redigging the transformation, educational transformation, um, it's, uh, all that stuff is kind of out in the air. Um, but my question is, okay, let's say we, um, approve the funding for it, what happens between now and next summer?
We keep, we keep babysitting like we are now and try our best. I mean, like, we have to be careful where we roof rake, but we try to. We don't have grain gutters up now because I want it to splash off as far as it can because it's filling itself. But damn, we just, same thing we've been doing, cross our fingers and do the best we can. When Jennifer calls me and says it's leaking in the back, I'll crawl in and we'll do the best that we can do.
Yeah.
That's, that's it.
That's bad, that's really bad.
The issue with, um, roofing now is it's a roofing site is dangerous. That's just a reality. A roofing site is dangerous. Um, and so when you roof someplace, then you're tossing stuff off the roof. And there's nails, there's this asphalt and this cleanup. And to do that while you're having school is just not a realistic sort of thing to do. Um, I think we're going to have to look at summer activities and how, how that's going to influence the building. But at those times, those, those kids during the summer camp aren't using the building. And so, um, there is the ability then to robe off the building, which you can't do during school. And so, um, I would love to have it done. It's kind of like when someone asks you what, ask me what time, what's the best time to plant a tree and fifty years ago? So when should, when, what's the best time to do the roof, you know, five years ago?
Is it dangerous?
Huh?
Is it dangerous? Is someone currently looking at the roof and making sure it's structurally sound, but safe?
If, my main concern as a parent and a school board member is that doing the roof during school is dangerous to the students.
Yes, no, I totally agree.
Right, is, is, is roofing dangerous? Of course it's dangerous. Um, is there any, is there any damage up there? You don't know until you take a roof off. And so you take the roof off and then you repair the damage that there. We, I mean, of course it's gonna be damaged because there's been water leaks and so, but that's why you need a certain amount of time to redo a roof.
All right. Um, unless there are other questions for Jim or other items for us to go over on this report, I think we can, uh, we can plan on making a motion during item seven now.
For the roof, do you, do you want to talk about the other things on the plan for next year and approve them all or not?
How much is in our reserve?
Uh, right there, total cost. Well, oh, that's a total cost.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's.
Oh, where did he tell me? Yeah, current balance, there it is, sorry. Yes, I knew we told you.
So we have.
So you have the money, yeah.
Yeah, and it, it did get, I mean, that was one of those big projects that we were aware of going into two school years ago. And with all the fun we were dealing with budget wise, it just wasn't viable, but yeah, we can't, we can't not do it, so.
Yeah. So the other two items on the list, uh, potential list for approval would be the sealing the cracks in the entryway, right?
That's the entryway.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
That's here. And then, um, a new screen and electronics in the Windsor Theater. And that's thirty-five thousand dollar cost, so.
Do you have a, just little details on that?
I have no detail on that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm, when it gets to the point, I'm gonna be working with IT on that, but Larry's got, Larry's got quotes on that and all of that. I don't. My piece of that will be when the, when the screen comes now, by law now you have to have rigger. Before I, you could go up there and chain it up yourself. We have to have certified riggers, so that will be my piece and hanging that screen.
Okay. But this is, this is limited to the screen and the projector instead. We're not talking sound system or any other.
No, we're talking the screen because, um, because now you can't show, the screen can only show from the theater side. This is one of the new screens where we'll be able to open up the doors and you could show, you can show yourself either way.
There we go.
Yep.
So you did, you had some.
Yeah, so.
No, that's, I appreciate that, Jim.
Can I just check on the, um, the bathroom upgrades here? Are those planned for this year already?
No.
No.
What we, what we talked about, that was one of the things we talked about last year at this time.
Yeah, no, we didn't, no, we haven't done anything. We've been working with the concrete on the water down there. We have not upgraded yet. Better.
But if, so what are the, what are the plans to upgrade since we had it on our list for this past year?
The plans for that was is that we wanted, we got some, Jennifer wanted, we wanted a higher stall, higher stall, closer to the floor, higher stall. And then I thought it might save us a little bit in repair and maintenance if we could, if we're, we could redo the plumbing. Because I went down back and all that. So now we've got the bottom all squared away. I think we're ready to start. Really having to drag my feet, I've been worried about water.
Okay, um, so can we, is it possible to get it on the, on the plan?
It's on this plan, I believe.
It's under budget.
So this is your regular, um, preventative maintenance, so bathrooms here, one floor per year, ABS and Windsor.
If you scroll down a little bit more, you'll see twenty-four thousand in blue.
Am I in the wrong place?
Yep, you're close, so just look, go like.
Oh, yeah, 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 I see right there.
Yep.
The plumbing, that's, that's plumbing. That's this year. And it looks like, um, that's what you're working on, Jimmy?
Yeah.
And then the, and the bathroom partitions, that's making them more of a single stall as best we can. So kids aren't crawling underneath or trying to look over.
All right. So that's all budgeted stuff.
That's, yeah.
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 Um, for the items that we would need to vote on, um, I guess we can, we can figure out how we're structuring the motion when we get to it, but.
Whatever you want in it or not. Yeah, well, just wanted Jimmy to be able to talk to it while he was here.
Excellent, yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
All right. So we're now moving on to, numbers are all on that one now, item six, which is the administrative report.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen.
Now this, so we inserted.
We did.
That's five or six.
All right. Who's taking the lead?
Um, I guess I can start. Uh, Kate Colleen and I are all in together this time. I think opening school, our, our work has been similar. So it felt like I got to share all the good stuff and then we're doing it together this time. Um, I think we've had and felt a, a very productive and positive opening of school. Um, we have had all the elementary, middle school and high school, um, assemblies and meetings and, um, secondary meetings about behavior with students. And, um, even with parents on our open, at our open house, meet the teacher last Wednesday. We had a, an okay turnout, um, for parents. Um, were there any good questions?
I don't think so.
Questions, I don't really remember questions.
I don't think there were.
I think it was a little ironic that it was very heavily attended by, um, which behavior's different at an elementary level than it is at a high school or middle school level, but it was very heavily attended by the elementary.
Did you wonder, oh, excuse me, did you wonder if you said it too early in the year?
I don't think so. Um, you know, I had a high school parent say, well, all the kids were at practice. And I said, well, that's great. If your high school kids are at practice, you were free to come. It was kind of my elementary, they were coming with their parents to.
I didn't mean in terms of time, but date.
I don't think so. I think what we had to talk about was really important to talk about very, very early before we got too many days in. Um, I think it was, it was that important and I know I have been to every elementary grade level to have a secondary meeting. Colleen has done double meetings with the middle school, um, Kate had them happening in the swarm. And so the presentation really was to speak more to families where we're doing a lot of work with speaking to the students. Um, I think we just need to do it again, right? Like, we just, we need to keep doing it, um, because I think I can only, I can only speak for myself and the conversations that Kate and Colleen and I are having. We feel it. We feel the difference by addressing this early.
I would say we just, our students, elementary, middle and high school, they, even if they're high school students and they're older, they all have to receive the information when it's appropriate for each individual person. And sometimes it just takes a few more times to hear the message and helping our students understand definitions of bullying, harassment, school policies, um, at the right age level, often in advisory, in a homeroom, in a morning meeting with a, with a teacher who knows them best. And the people who know them best is really important and we want to make sure we get the message out early in the year.
I, I guess no one can say at this point in our school, they didn't know. And, you know, with the kids especially, I did. I just made a comment about the, uh, the.
Just one quick, can we just remember to just raise your hand with, we're starting to.
Sorry.
It's okay, so.
Can I make a quick comment about the, um, the sign off sheet? Um, uh, in my opinion, it should be at the end of the handbook and not on the first page of the handbook. Just to encourage people to page through, to get to that page.
Totally hear you. Um, what we've discovered is, um, people don't get to the end. So we tried it in the beginning. Um, can certainly, you know, we're still, we're still waiting, we're still collecting signatures. And kids are not supposed to be issued their Chromebooks until parents sign off on their.
Yeah, neither of our kids were issued their Chromebook until we signed off.
As, as incentive to, you know, look through it, but, um, yeah.
We could even have like a little, um, initial bottom of each page.
Yeah, we could sign off each page.
There and then there are at least like, each page has been open.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge. Okay.
Colleen, do you want to keep going? Do you want to?
Oh, sorry. That's a. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, we were, like Kate started, um, as the lead and started the first HHB meeting. We were very glad to have, um, Davis join us for some of our meetings and, and have a lot of staff around our students so they know who, who their team is, who's supporting them. We did, um, A lot of staff around our students so they know who, who their team is, who's supporting them. We did, um. High school meeting, middle school meeting, the elementary meetings. And then as Tracy said, we're doing some follow up. When, one of the other things that the middle school is doing is we're trying, when we do this often, kind of in short bursts to help remind students. In those larger team in middle school meetings, but also in the advisory meetings where they're really a lot closer to their teacher and have that. Person that they check in with every day. We're also making sure our community in the building is a part of it. So. This week, the middle school team met with Ms. Price to help understand some more definitions. Next week, our kids are meeting with custodians and. Kitchen staff. Because anytime a student has like a conversation with the kitchen staff or the custodians, it's. It always starts the same way. We're all here working together. We're all in this. Culture, building the school culture together. We're here to support you with good food, want the place to be nice, take care of it for each other. So we just want to make sure that we're including the whole community when we have those meetings. And our middle school, I actually had a middle school student invite. Which was really lovely. Um, our lead kitchen person to the meeting for next week and that was great. So, um. Yeah, so that, that's how the year has started off. And for me in the middle school, the students are excited about their annual. Farming Wilderness trip that's coming up soon. So that's kind of. On everybody's mind right now.
She is. Yeah, sorry. I was waiting for a call from Mount of Scotty and I knew it was going to come when this meeting started and it did.
All right. I've got a question.
Elizabeth.
Um. Is, are the kids from Albert Bridge included in farming wilderness this year?
We're already collaborating. All right, so Albert Bridge School, um, very similar, great start to the year. We use responsive classrooms. So the first six weeks is awful about setting the stage. Expectations, um, taught, practiced, reinforced, um, as well as students create their hopes and dreams, which. Becomes the classroom expectations rules, which is in line with later in these contract that you do, um, depending on your age range. So that's often running. Our flex teaching, uh, because we now have two multi-age classrooms, um, is after a really strong start. It's been great seeing both cla, those classes having lots of support during, um, core academic instruction. Um, our exploratory time for Fridays is, um, it's always entertaining to hear what kids want to do. It's a great time for kids' voice. To show up. So they've shared with us a whole host of things that they want to try to do. So now we're trying to whittle down how we can do a lot of that and offer, um, some choice for them. On Fridays, there's a K one, two segment. And then there's, sorry, there's a K, a one, two and a three, Q six segment on those days. Um, gardens, um, if you go back to the back, there's a lot of good food out there that's, um, ready to go. We, we don't have enough capacity to eat it all here. Um, also wanted to let you know that all of the front gardens are going to be taken over by our fifth graders. They're going to recreate the pollinator garden. We have a local person and then, um, specialist, um. In landscaping, we're collaborating with our students to help redesign it. So right now you'll see some blank spots. That's because they're pulling it up to make it. Ready for the next round. Um, so a couple of fun pictures. Our compost, um, up in that top one is super awesome. The kids are. Fascinated by the process of food turning into dirt. Um, and we now have three of, but our bins are all filled. And then the one that goes to the back and has kind of that final stage is wrapped up underneath a cloth. Um, and if you look under that cloth, it looks like dirt. So that's pretty cool. Um, so they're rocking well in there. Uh, bottom, if you're looking at it left, is, uh, fifth, or excuse me, sixth graders and kindergarten is doing a math lesson together. So you would see them in groups talking and really helping those kindergarteners feel like they're connected to the school and not afraid of the big kids. Middle picture is fifth graders. They're doing hopes and dreams for art class. So every class has their hopes and dreams. You say, I want to do this as an artist. And then you create your rules by saying, in order for me to do that, what do I need from myself? What do I need from others? What do I need from the environment? And so they create rules based on that. Um, and then recess time, kids just playing with bugs. I'm staying curious, but being careful.
Do you want, do you want me to?
Yeah, sure. Timeline, that reminder, that timeline that we presented, um, last year and the work that we're doing and, um. September, I believe we, we have done a school culture survey. Um. We've had the caregiver information. And so I think we are. We have completed August and September already.
So ABS's version will be in a couple of weeks for the community. We did have a couple. At the Windsor Room, which was nice. It's a couple of families there. Um, and then we started the presentation to students. We did three, two, six. Actually, this was able to join. We're doing a K one, two this Wednesday in a proper way.
Elizabeth.
Uh, so. A couple of questions. I can't see very well, so forgive me, but, um. It's MBA.
It's the plugin system, the reporting system that we use for misbehavior, for reporting behavior. It's in Power School. Okay, um. Uh, so is this like a behavior matrix?
No, it's a logging system. It's where teachers or staff. Log, or even if a student reports a behavior to a teacher, the teacher would log it for the student. So it's, it's a logging system where we keep track of everything.
Is there anywhere that we can see what's in there?
To their own students.
No, I don't think they do.
I think there is. Is there a function? I think there's a function.
There, we're, we're going to be printing this year, um, caregiver reports that, that Power School feeds into EduClima. And we're going to be at conference times and one other time during the year printing, um. A caregiver report, which is all of, um, it, it shows you attendance, it shows you any mine, uh, major infractions. Behavior infractions. It gives you test score, assessment scores, and I think an overview of your students' grades in Power School. So it'll be the first year we're printing it. Um.
But I, I, I just wondered whether, when, when you have the, uh. Modification of MBA to include major, minor and required communication. Can we see what the, what the. Things that have been added are, we don't have to see what the students have.
You mean what's in, what's reported in Power School, uh, in MBA?
Maybe like a blank one.
Yes, yes, we like. Sorry. Yes.
Anybody's done or.
Yes, yes. You want a list of like major and minor behaviors that are in, in the MBA system that get reported?
Yes.
I thought you were talking about.
No, 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 no. I just want to know.
Yeah, I hear you.
How it was updated. And then, uh, uh.
Which is possible. But push out behavior in parent portal, but the issue is that it's, it's instantaneous and you don't want that. To be the first notification of an issue.
Right. I'd rather have a phone call.
Electronic, automatic notification, that much faster than.
But yes, we can, we can generate a list of what's in, what gets reported for you. Absolutely.
So for when we look at this next month, I can maybe.
It, it's also an incredible communication tool because when, when teachers put something in, I, and, you know, Kate and Colleen and I. And Jen automatically get notified. So we can be involved right from, from the entry. No, just a number on my computer, but, um, but we can know right away, which is, which is, or the SEIs or the other people that might be drilling, working with behavior. Yeah, I'd love to see what a blank. Um, not just what the categories are, but also what a blank, uh. Submission looks like. So I want to, I want to know also, uh, whether. It includes, um. Different, I don't know whether you score it or how you, or it is just a note of, uh, just a box.
Scored, yeah.
Probably create a dummy account for next time.
We could.
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to see a dummy account.
You know, it's ju, just like we're going through, um, the system we're reviewing this time, Power School and Google Classroom. So next month, let's plan to just take a, get a quick kind of like primer on MBAs, sort of understanding how that's working in the backend.
You got it.
Awesome.
All right, speaking of Google Classroom and Power School, um, Steve Malloy is here and he's got a presentation to hopefully answer some of the questions that came up. Last month, um, before he gets on, um, I just wanted to, one of the questions was about, um, informational videos. And there, there are, I think, two, um, Ryan said, on the website for parents to look at to help them navigate. Sign up for account. So, yeah, there are two on there. Um, but Steve is going to take over. Now, if I unplug Steve, that comes down. You want to just share with me? Or do you want to?
Did I use my computer? Cause I'm actually going to log into my Google Classroom. Is that possible?
Use the force, Luke.
Or I can just kind of hold it up.
So have you joined, have you joined the meeting? If you join the meeting, then you can share your screen. And then I can unplug and you can plug. Usually it would work just fine, but the L was, the L was not working tonight.
So, well, Steve, anyways, why don't you give a quick synopsis of who Steve is?
Yeah, I was about to do that. Thanks. Thank you. So, uh, Steve Malloy is our high school, um. He was, uh, he's still a teacher. He's teaching a little bit of social studies. Um, but this year he's transitioned into the role of, um, instructional. Team leader. So he's part of the leadership team that's working with the curriculum, um, director of curriculum. And he is doing, um, his role is a little bit different at the high school level because he's working on guiding the, some of the. Finishing up some of the proficiency work and the, um. Graduation, oh. Steve will tell you. But Steve, um, has a wealth of experience and knowledge and we're really fortunate that he is, um, part of the high school. And part of the instructional team leader, team. So let me see if, I'm going to unplug Steve, okay? I'm still in the meeting, but you're not going to see it up there until Steve joins it. I might need to switch seats with you, Steve, actually. Somebody just wanted to join the meeting. So let me, let you.
It's got to be Justin.
It's Justin. Yep, he's coming in. Yeah, how'd you do that? Oh, you joined. Okay, you did it. Steve, you are on.
I think you might just have a, uh, delay on yours.
That was just a, a, that was for mine. This is Steve's report.
You can look up there, Nancy.
Well.
Not quite the same.
Okay.
Sorry, the L.
So, yeah, so, um, yeah, so I'm Steve Malloy. This is my first year as the instructional team leader in the high school. I've been, I was high school district for ten years. So. Going to my limit through total, um, district. So I'm not going to lie. I thought Bridget was going to be here too, because we were going to slip this presentation. I'll just do all of it. I'll deal with her tomorrow. So there's a, there's actually a couple of things I, uh, we want to go over, um, not just Power School and Google Classroom, but it, it all kind of fits together. So there's really three main points here. We have it all outlined here. So the first thing that we're doing, um, is there has been a little bit of a shift in the grading process. Within the high school, um, with the biggest shift being, uh, what the high school staff, we started working on this last year. Let's see if this. Close, see, we'll see. Nah, it doesn't. Um, we have been working on, um. Developing what are called PPIs or, um. Priority performance indicators. We've been doing that work in conjunction with the Vermont AOE. Um, each department had an AOE representative. Um, that would work to kind of formulate these PPIs and essentially identify when these students graduate. What does it exactly want them to be able to know? Um, I have a full, I'm not going to bring it up, but I'll take, I'll just give you a glimpse. I think it might be on the curriculum website. Each department created all of these different PPIs. A lot of them were an evolution of the standards that we've been previously using. But, um, they're a little bit more focused on, uh, what state wants to see and, um. Kind of, we, we were able to take some of the standards and kind of like, you know, kind of combine them a little bit, shift some of the wording, just to kind of, you know, really emphasize exactly. And what's changing this year, we've, we've added, uh, we've moved to what are called weighted categories where the basic idea is. Every single thing that a student does, uh, carries weight, um, which was a little bit of a shift from how it was before, but, um. And that was decided at a department level. Um, it's not up to individual teachers to decide. Um, each department met. Um, and develop their, their weighting for each of those categories. Um, I do have a document that has all of those categories, uh, by department. Just to give a, a, a general simplification, in almost all cases. It is some form of projects, tests, uh, bigger, what we used to call summative assessments are typically weighted much more somewhere, you know. Uh, some cases forty percent, thirty five percent, you know, so on and so forth. But the, with the other part being, you know, within a lot of these courses, there's. There's day-to-day work. There's maybe, you know, some little like smaller writing assignments in saying English course, there's smaller writing assignments that build. You know, to the, uh, sort of final zone assessment that we want to make sure that, you know, students are consistently, you know, being held accountable for the work they do on a day-to-day basis. So all those are now weighted as well in a part of the final grade, right? However, those are. In pretty much all cases, a much smaller percentage, ten percent, fifteen percent. So the, the greater weight for the course is still, um. The bigger, the bigger assessments, uh, while still holding the kids accountable for each, um, each part of that. Are there any questions on that before I move into Google Classroom versus Power School? Um, let's see, start with Elizabeth and then.
Um, have, 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 and if so, where, uh, students been. Informed of this and where and, uh. Because I know that both of my kids, um. Uh, rely really heavily on the summative assessments, um, and. If it's changed, then they need to, not just that they need to know, but I, I'm sure they're not alone in.
They've all been informed, um, by their individual teachers, um. Beyond that, and I believe Kate has outlined that some as well.
The, the very, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The very first back to school, like it was very, um. Our first assembly together, uh, that morning when they walked in, we talked about how it's no longer just the last three assignments. Um, and then individual teachers were going over it with them.
Yeah, each individual te, I was, I was floating around rooms on the first day of school and it does, I pretty much told all the teachers in advance, like, hey, you really should. You know, highlight and pretty much every teacher outlined to the students, this is the percentage for these assignments. This is what it's going to be. Um, so they're all, um, should be very.
And it was in the parent newsletter.
I know, I know. I, um, yes, it wasn't about. That it just wanted to know where, where it was being reiterated. That's all.
So some, some quick concerns. Um, the energy, the first law of thermodynamics provide. Evidence through so forth and so on. That's not a performance indicator. That, that's a knowledge base. There's no performance in it. Are they all written like that or just that one? Playing devil's advocate here. Also, categories are weighed based on formative and summative nature. What do you mean categories? Or what, what are those weighting? What do you mean formative categories are weighted formative and summative? Students grade or the categories? Power, what do you mean by categories there?
The categories is the type of assignment, the type of assignment that is being given to the student.
Okay, so.
Could be quizzes, tasks, projects.
So what do you mean weighted? And their, their grade is weighted?
Yes.
But formative assessment should not. Be included in a student's grade. That's not the nature of formative assessment.
But it.
No, not but, that's just, that's, if, if it's being weighted, then it's not forming some.
Well, we've, as a, we're moving away from what are known as formative and summative assessments. We're not really using that terminology anymore.
How do you not use that terminology? I mean, that's, what are you using then? If, I mean, that makes no sense to me in that you just. My frustration is when. My frustration is when schools make shit up as they go, okay? And so if you're going to be within a educational institute, you need to be perfectly clear, the difference between a formative and a summative assessment. If you're gonna move away from using those terms and you're gonna call them something else, then call them something else. But if here you're saying that you're basing their grade based on formative and summative, you haven't moved on to something else. You're using formative and sus- uh summative. And you're using them incorrectly because you're saying you're basing their grade on formative assessment. And grade should not be based on formative assessment. So before you present something, you need to apply proper educational terminology and not just make shit up as you go. That may seem harsh, but.
Probably another way to put that though. Huh? Probably another way to put that, but I agree.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna put it in any other way. Um that's, that's how I feel, and I have the educational background to make that claim.
I'm not, I'm not saying the argument itself, because I also, you know, work in evaluation and understand what you're saying about formative assessment.
Right.
The, the particular length, I just want to say that.
Okay, I'm just, yeah. No. I'm not gonna put it down. I put it the way I put it.
Ready to move on?
Yeah, I think probably some further conversation um when Bridget's here might be helpful.
Yeah, there's been a lot of work done with the Agency of Education and the team on all of this. So I think maybe having some more people in the room to kind of collaborate about what it means and where, where the current tensions are. Conversation could be helpful.
Yeah.
Alright, so uh looking at Power School versus Google Classroom. Um so beginning with Power School, so Power School is the central, you know, is essentially the, the mandated reporting system that all teachers within, uh like, what was it, high school? But the, the high school is responsible for um outlining, that is where all the grades are entered. That is where everything, you know, the expectation is that the teachers are, you know, keeping up with that. That is where they are sharing their information. And that, you know, that is sort of the centralized hub for all the work that is being completed um by the students. Uh at this point, parents and guardians already have access to view that. Um you know, they can look up their students' progress at any time. Um there is essentially, you know, teachers have, there's quite a bit of information they are able to put within Power School. You know, whether that is assignments that are due, assignments that are coming, assignments that are missing, you know, so on and so forth. And as you can see here, this is just a simple, you know, breakdown of what the basic thing um that we see when we put in our you know, in our grade book um for what's available um to be in there. Versus uh Google Classroom.
Wait, sorry, can you go back for a second?
Yes.
I don't know how I was about to say it, but. I'm sorry, can you just read what the three categories are along the top?
So those are just, that's just a mock, those are mock um assignments that I put in, just as an example.
Okay, um so uh so are you grading on a curve in, in this example?
So this is an example of the weighted categories, right? So we have, so I use the example, I teach history through film course.
Yeah.
Right, so um as you can see here, the first, in the first two um rows, uh columns there, those are um film reflections, right? So those are weighted at a lower percentage within the course. And then this third, this third assignment here is a larger project that is done, you know, at a later point in the in the semester. So what happens is, right, and this is gives an example of the grades. Because if you look at the first student here, right, so they received a four on the film, on these two film reflections, which are weighted at a lower percentage. And this student here, and the same student on a much larger assignment, received a one. So as you can see, they're great, though it shows as a four, a four and a one, it's going to weigh much lower because this assignment here carries more weight.
Okay, uh what's the percentage next to the final grade?
That is, we don't know why that's in there. That doesn't, that's just, as long as I use, as long as I've used Power School, that zero percent has been there. I don't really know what that means.
And this is all calculating a single standard?
No, this is calculating all of them together.
For the roll-up to the final.
The PPI.
Yes.
So you have a standard and then you have multiple PPIs that roll up for the standard.
No, no, the, the PPIs are what they're being assessed on.
Right. But.
So they're attaching the PPI to those assignments, I believe.
Right, and then usually under one standard, there are multiple performance indicators. That then get pushed out to the report card, or is every PPI on the report card?
No.
I didn't think so. So what would a high school student see on their report card in science? A variety, a, a multitude of standards, correct?
No, so Bill, this was kind of some of the non-negotiables as we worked through this with the um AOE and within ourselves. So the PPIs are tied to assignments and from, we, we did a, a, um, a mock. I couldn't think of that word. One, and the parent sees like the assignment and the PPIs attached to it, but they can't see how they did in the individual PPIs. Only the teacher, right, Steve, can see that from their end. And then the non-negotiables, the teacher has to communicate that to um the parent. So you could do well on an assignment, but still be having a hard time with one um, with one skill set.
Right, but on the report card, Windsor High School is grading using um they're not called standards anymore.
Proficiencies.
Proficiencies, correct? So indicators rolled up to a proficiency. So on the report card, under science, there would be a variety of proficiencies. Yes, no?
So we, I think you're asking about like the quick look up, right? Because we don't even.
Oh, I'm talking about the report card.
So we don't do report cards.
Oh, well, oh God, that's right.
Yeah. Which is why we're printing the parent, the caregiver.
What a hot mess.
Well, I can show you through um.
At, at the end of the year, what goes on the transcript?
At the end of the year, what goes on the transcript would be the course title.
Yeah.
The final grade, which will be one number on the one through four scale.
Okay, but there's no, is the performance tied to that one number?
No, not one single.
It's, it's, then it's not non-sequential. You know, it, it doesn't mean anything. It's then just a one to four conventional grading system. So, but let's take a step back.
Yeah.
With, when the parents go to the, to, to the portal, the indicators roll up to the, the performance indicators roll up to a proficiency. Do they see a proficiency that is then created by the assignments, which then grade the PPIs, which then grade the proficiencies? Is that how this?
Go ahead. He said, is that how this works? I believe from the parent side, because I struggle with this, because when I log in, it defaults to, to my admin. So I have to log in from home from my other one. Um the parents see the end result, but they, they can't see the specific, they can see the PPIs that led into that, but they can't see how the kid did on the specific, the specific PPI. So when the teacher gives the assignment back, it, like Destiny Lawyer attaches a paper up top and it has the assignment grade and then the PPIs of how they did on each one.
Right, but I'm, I'm going downstream a little bit, right? I understand that, that you have an assignment, you have a PPI, which gets its score from the assignments. And then where does the PPI go? That score.
What do you mean, where does it go? It, it stays there.
It's the proficiency-based score in the end, so.
If you get a four in, in science, uh right, is that what you're talking, in the domain?
Right. In the domain, you, you don't just get a one through four in science, because that's a, that's not a proficiency-based grade. That's just a grade. So do the parents see the, the, the proficiency scores? I'm assuming this, there's proficiency sto- scores, because they're required for standards-based grading or proficiency-based grading. So are the parents seeing the scores for the proficiency-based rating? For the proficiency-based standards?
So it sounds like um we need to come back to this conversation and do a little.
Like last year again?
Yeah.
Has that, has that changed?
I think if you had expand, you can, you can see it, but I'm not positive. So we will have a, a mock one ready, or we could, Bill, I could talk to you during this week and show you what it looks like.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And I think Bridget is planning to come to the SU meeting in December, because we talked about discussing.
December?
Yeah, we put it on the SU agenda um, um grading. I have it in my notes to make sure she's here in December, so, I mean, I can invite her earlier if you'd like.
This is, it seems like it, I mean, that's at the end of the semester.
This is high school, so um nothing's changed in K eight. This is just high school. Um and it, it came out of the work with the AOE last year, so.
Well, I knew that the high school was ahead because you were hoping to finish that first, so then it would trickle down.
And, yep, and Bridget is working on the proficiencies with the middle level. Um the AOE pulled their support. In August, I mean, we had, to be frank, we had planned the whole year thinking we had their support and partnership. And that was a decision made by the secretary um based on the, based on Act seventy-three. So.
Wow.
Yeah.
The high school also has the, the whole year this year is emphasis on, we need to continue this work. We are by no means done. We still have a lot of stuff that needs to be ironed out, a lot of details that, like, we are still very much in a, in a process. We are by no means finished.
Yeah, and it's a work in progress, and I think um it feels like, uh and this is just from my perspective, I haven't been right at the table in all of this. From the teacher's perspective, there, you know, there are a lot of students who um are not buying into any of the work, right? So we went to standards-based and you're grading on a standard. And in theory, a student could do no work all semester and do one assignment and they're proficient. And that has created a lot of students who are not participating in school.
Yeah.
And so I think part of this is trying to figure out how to still work in a proficiency-based system, but engage the students in the work. Um, did I get that right, Steve?
And also have a system that, which is gonna sound funny after we just had this whole conversation, also have a system that parents can understand, like where, like my child needs to improve their grade, how can, how can they do that? And that the kids can understand how it's working.
I think that speaks to, you know, what you have brought up about being able to see the breakdown that leads into that number at the end. I mean, I think that, that is incredibly important, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that.
To work in progress, clearly.
Absolutely, and I, I'm glad to hear that there is some confidence that you can hit expand on the parent portal and see like, these are all the different way the numbers that go into this file number.
Yeah.
But I, I think that is maybe something.
And we can come back next month and continue the conversation.
The crux of it is that we're trying to, you know, especially in the high school, we're trying very hard to hold on to the proficiency-based model while, I don't necessarily hold it against the, but, you know, we work, we work every day with them, you know, and we want every day to matter. And unfortunately, there were a lot of kids who just checked out and they check back in for that last, last few and right at the end. It's just like, you know, so it's, again, we're, we're a year in, we're, we're trying to make some tweaks. There's definitely gonna be more tweaks as we, as we work towards.
And, and, and I'd like to apologize for my anger, because it was, but not a but, it, it's sort of an explanation in, in that I completely support your work. But I've been struggling with this for thirty years. Uh as a parent and as an education professional, you know, um in that, you know, having my children you know, struggle at Woodstock, you know, having teachers not understand the difference between formative and summative and, and grading my children on their homework completion. As a dyslexic student, special ed student, that, that was, that's very emotional for me. But also, on a daily basis, even today, dealing with educational professionals at Hartford who don't understand what standards are. And trying, and having them ask me to create standards, which is what I do in, in SIS, when they don't even know what standards are. And so um and your slide was basically triggered for me, so I apologize. You, you triggered me.
I know, I don't want to throw under the bus.
And she, yeah.
Yeah.
And it, it is really complicated, Bill. We've been trying to switch from a traditional grading system to standards-based for decades. And people.
So long ago.
I know.
And.
But people still equate in their heads of a four to a hundred percent, right? They're, they go back to that system that they know.
Some people don't understand a one to four scale and they associate it to that A, B, C, D, F.
I think that that was our, our first mistake, was using one through four, because it makes people go back to a hundred point scale.
Maybe you should use W, X, Y, Z. Yeah, usually, I mean, theoretically, I as a parent should be able to, if my child is fully engaged, let's just say for funsies, that was true. I should be able to go to the specific standards and see where they've fallen behind on, on the internalization of these standards. And I should be able to say, you know, not just how'd you do on that homework, but let's talk about.
Yeah, the actual knowledge of the understanding of standard. Yeah.
And, and.
And I like that. I like that about this system, I really do, because you can, it kind of breaks down every um, every deficit.
Which is really important when, to create a performance indicator. And then the, the proficiency.
Proficiency, yeah.
But then the next step is on transcripts. In science, you list your proficiency and then you have those proficiency scored. So the final results, the students then see it on the transcript. There's absolutely no reason why on a transcript you have to have a single score.
Right.
So I can, I can touch on.
I think that that's just comfort levels also with parents and working, balancing out a college's need. It's not, it hasn't been easy, that's for sure.
Yeah, but you have to let go of your fear. That's the path to the dark side of the force.
I mean, aren't you, you can also find patterning in the, in the deficits.
Yes, yeah.
Theoretically.
You can, yep. Yep, for sure.
And I can, I can talk about it a little bit more when I get to um, you know, my last thing. Um so the, the, going back to the, the Power School versus Google Classroom. So while Power School essentially is the um, you know, mandatory thing that all teachers want for Google Classroom is a little bit more, there's a little bit more freedom there. Um you know, it, it serves a number, it, it, the reality is each teacher's gonna use it drastically. Uh some teachers aren't gonna use it at all. Um some teachers are gonna use it a ton. Um there is not any sort of explicit um expectation for how much a teacher has to use Google Classroom. Um there's a lot of functions that it can be used for, right, student discussions, you can announce things to the class, whether it's in emails. Um, you know, you can discuss items on there, you can post assignments, things like that, um. But there's, there's really two big, um, aspects with Google Classroom that makes it very different from Power School. The first is. Right, again, as I said, it's such a discretion to the teaching conferences, it's like one thing I learned, uh, because I was trying to help my wife or something who works in those school. Now the math teachers really use Google Classroom, right, because so much of their work is, is written in things like that, it's not as much of a, um. Presence for them, whereas in some other courses, are, it's much more prevalent. I, you know, I like to think I use it as a middle ground, um, you know, I would use it to. Um, you know, post assignments, sometimes I like to use it for announcements, especially I did capstone for years with seniors, that was an easy way to get all seen. The other issue is that there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of disconnect with what's in Google Classroom versus what is. Sort of ultimately in Power School, and I'll give you a really simple example, is you can post assignments in Google Classroom. But I'll tell you the way that I would do it is I always liked with students, I always liked to have a hard copy and a digital copy. Right, I want to make sure they always have both, just because. Kids are different, you know, every kid's different and they're going to like it the way they like it. So a kid, I may give an assignment, may, you know, assign, uh, they're going to read Martin Luther King's letter from Birmingham jail, all right, and they're going to read their section, they're going to give me, you know. Their explanation based on the prompt that I gave them. I'm going to give them, I'm going to say, all right, here's the hard copy. And I also posted it in Google Classroom, right? Half those kids make, give it to me hard copy. Half may turn it on Google Classroom. Well, kids are turning in hard copy. I'm not going to check off in Google Classroom that they turned it in, I'm going to turn, I'm going to check off that they turned it in in Power School. And even those students who may turn it in on Google Classroom, I'm not going to read it in Google Classroom because it's not the same setup. I'm just going to, I'm going to see it's done in Google Classroom, I'm going to look at it, I'm going to put the grade in Power School. So why, so why? We'd like to use Power School as sort of the reporting out aspect is there's just Google Classroom. While it has, you know, it, it's much better used as a tool within classroom and I'm also, I think the biggest, um, impetus for, you know, keeping it there. Is I think it's going to create more confusion than it's going to, um. You know, than it's going to eliminate because anything that you can find in Google Classroom, you can also find in Power School, because Google Classroom's. You know, it's going to show missing assignments. If you go into Power School, you're going to see the little missing symbol. Um, if you're curious as to what a, um, you know, assignment is in Power School, you can, and I do this, you, you can put the assignment, what you're supposed to do, you can link the read, you know. So everything that you can have in Google Classroom, you can also have in Power School.
So it sounds like Power School is, for all intents and purposes, here the, the kind of source of truth behind like what all this stuff is, whereas Google Classroom is a resource and communication tool.
Yeah.
And that, you know, what, what I appreciate about that is that it. Provides some accessibility measures for if a student is more comfortable, more able to submit something. Via their, you know, Chromebook versus writing it down or write, you know, typing somewhere else, printing it. Yeah, sending it in, there's multiple pathways, but at the end of the day, when you look at Power School, that is the, that's the thing.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it'd be important to, to, to educate parents in the fact that, uh, Power School is the S I S. So that's a non-negotiable, that, that does your state reporting, uh, that does your transcript, that does your report card, if you ever get to a report card. Um, so that's the non-negotiable. Google Classroom is an L M S. Uh, S I S Student Information System, L M S Learning Management System. And so even though Classroom has a grade book, which I think is going to be end dated. Um. It is a grade book that can't grade standards, it is only a, on a hundred point scale. And so when you have two separate ways to calculate grades. Um, and they don't mesh, then you're much better off not using an L M S that doesn't grade in a way that. Uh, policy and. And, and how you create your grade system works, because you can't do standards in Google Classroom, um.
I can't speak for all my other colleagues, but in eleven years, I've never tried once to grade something in Google Classroom. It's just, the thoughts never even crossed my mind, it's just been. I get something, goes in Power School, just, you know.
That would need you to have put your grades someplace and then you have to go someplace, why would a teacher do that?
Well, because some S I S is infinite campus, if you grade something, and this, this is just at the high school, because they still use conventional grading. Um, and in Google Classroom, they can, if they create an assignment in Google Classroom, they can push that and the grade. To the infinite campus grade book. Because it's.
Just do it once in.
Right, it's one roster.
Yeah.
And so, and, and so the same thing with Canvas, which is another L M S, if you create an assignment Canvas. They can push it to Infinite Campus, and if they make an assignment in Infinite Campus, you can push to Canvas, but.
Fundamental, what you're saying is in those instances, your learning management system is integrated with your student information system, whereas these are two different.
Two separate.
Yes, yeah. Got it.
Unfortunately.
You just always have it that way, and I think about when I was teaching, like the Google Classroom was a place where you could have a chat with your students, get into a lot of detail about the assignment. Students can message back, ask questions, whereas the. Power School is where you just set the grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And especially when you move to a standards based system. In that Canvas and. Um, Google Classroom, you can't grade with standards.
Right.
And so.
Was it?
Uh. I.
That's just somebody that wants to get in, sorry.
That's calling Justin.
Um, he was here, he's, Justin's here.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm here. Okay. It's my partner, Justin, who, uh. Has been. We've both been really frustrated about. The dichotomy between. Google Classroom and Power School, and let me explain what our experience is. We know that grades are not being recorded in Google Classroom, we cannot see the outcome of the assignment. We just get a report at the end of every day that says. Here's the Google Classroom report for our middle schooler. So I don't know whether. Power School assignments or whether assignments are recorded in Power School in middle school. Or not, whether that's just a high school thing, but what we see is a report at the end of every day. In Google Classroom for our middle schooler and it gives assignments that. It has due dates on them, so we ask relentlessly whether that assignment has been completed because it is not, it does not show up in. Power School at all. And so, uh, we, and, and we can't know. Um. What the assignments are. Besides what we're getting from the Google Classroom notification, we don't get to see what the article is, we don't get to, so we can't like. Ask if you were, if you were, had an assignment about the, um, letter from the Birmingham jail, we can't ask questions about it. Um, we can't like. Do the things that one would do as a parent to like make it fun and interesting to do the assignment. Um, and it's really frustrating because we don't know what is expected of us as parents. Uh, and that, uh. Really. Uh. Makes it impossible, impossible for us to help our student. Impossible, we don't know what's assigned, we don't know, uh. Uh, we don't know what's expected of us, we don't know what's expected of our, our student and we feel like we are. Being told to look in all these different places and none of them have complete information. And Justin, if you're there. Did I get all of it?
You hit it.
Excellent. I think you nailed it.
It's extremely frustrating and we feel, when we go to parent teacher conferences, we feel as though. Consistently, we feel as though, uh, we have failed. Um, and that when our student gets a, a poor mark. You know, it, it reflects on our student, but also on us because, uh, we've been helping in the way that we ought. Um, and, and but we don't. Because of these parallel, seemingly parallel systems, uh. Uh. We've been at a loss for. A few years. And so, and, and that partly does stem from. I hate to say it, but it does partly stem from COVID where everything was in Google Classroom and it, and then, but we were here at Albert Bridge. Which was a different system, we felt like we were missing something along the way, and then it turned out that we weren't, it's just that it's an inconsistent use of Power School in the middle school. Is what I'm realizing and that, uh. I. I guess we should. I don't know whether we should be following the Google Classroom notifications or, or not, um.
And so, just a question for Steve, every assignment in Google, I mean, when I was teaching, not every assignment in Google Classroom went into Power School. Some of it was just practice and I wanted them to do the assignment, but it did not. It formally graded in Power School, so that was even more confusing for parents.
It is extremely, it is extremely, what are we supposed to be on our student about?
Right.
We don't know.
Got it.
And we've gotten nothing consistent from, uh, we love teachers, we're not. We absolutely love the teachers.
It's the system, it's the system.
But, yeah. Uh.
Well, that's good feedback.
And, and to that point, like, for example, right now, there was a homework assignment, uh, given to our youngest. Uh, and they had it in their hand, they brought it with them to school, they reported as turning it in, but it's marked as missing in Power School. But they said that maybe it's not graded and so we're in a position of not really, and again, I don't know how much of that is. You know, teaching the, the, the student to. Take control of their own stuff, but in terms of what type of parental intervention, we're kind of hamstrung because. Everything is, that's not graded, or that just hasn't been turned in yet, or we don't know.
So, on the elementary side, um. That, that the frustration is that parents feel and, and I get feedback on this a lot because. Daniel was part of a rather large and vocal parent group, um. Which is not a bad thing, um, that. Power School was really not utilized, that the children aren't graded and they don't seem to be graded accurately, there's a real difference between there. Their star testing, their state testing standards that they output and what's reported on the report card. And so you see a student who scored on a two level in, say, in math. And then in star and state testing, they're scoring. A four. Or. Uh, they, they have a two and then in reading, they're, they're scoring on a fourth grade level or third grade, um. And so that difference, and then when you look at it, you, you see that. Teachers are not. Consistently and with fidelity, scoring students summative assessment. I guess is they're probably not giving them enough summative assessment, which. As an elementary teacher, I, I know that is something that happens, um. But I, I think it's important that. As a board member, I fully support administration. On the SU level and on the school level for, to create procedures and expectations of grading. Um. From the administrators and holding teachers accountable to do that. I remember when I taught middle school, you know, we were expected to put in so many. Uh, Power School grades a week. So that parents would be informed, informed about X, Y, and Z. Um. And I think one thing that would simplify thing is. Communicating that through a single platform, not allowing parents to get that daily. Email with a list of what's happening. Because that becomes spam. Or it becomes a false sense of, uh, understanding when parents. Who want to be involved should be logging into their parent portal and looking at the assignments, looking at the performance indicators, looking what needs to be done in a single location. Not in a multiple location and so. And it's, it's really up to administrators to come up with those procedures. And know that if you need policies to allow you to do that, because. Battling teachers. With. Expectations can be difficult for administrators.
Yeah, I can just, um, thank you, Bill, we did, um, we've heard this, so last year, we as an administrative team did come up with some. Expectations in the handbook, in the, in the staff handbook in the past, it said, um, it said weekly. And, you know.
And every five days.
And, and it hasn't been, it has not been consistent, we'll own that, um. So this year, what we said was all teachers, um. K five are expected to enter. Minimum, like, minimally, the end of unit assessment, um, for Eureka and for Amplify, and that's the same K eight for. Eureka, um, they've been working in grade level teams, uh. And the last year, beginning of this year, they'll continue the work throughout the year during the professional development time. Looking at the assessments, looking at the units, um. Organizing the units in a way that makes sense based on, you know, time of year, et cetera. And going through the assessments and determining what questions they're going to ask and then report, and that will be the same across grade levels, so it's a start, yeah.
Elementary has an advantage though, that I don't think they're taking advantage of, unlike high school and middle school, um. Much of. The curriculum is purchased.
Yeah.
And, yeah, that, and that curriculum has built into it. Performance indicators and, and.
It sure does.
So those should be put into.
Yep.
Our school. Not. Common core standards, but what the actual curriculum is using, in that way, it's easier and more effective for teachers. To post the grades because in their end of chapter, it says what's, it's right there. And it makes it easier for parents, especially when they get. Uh, reports, they can actually see that this is the curriculum and this is what they scored on the curriculum.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, so we're, we're working on that, um.
And I know it takes time.
It does, but. It's an expectation and we're going to have to, I, I think they were actually the feedback from the teachers, they're very happy to be working with their grade level peers on this work. So that everybody's clear on what they're supposed to be doing, what they're supposed to be reporting, so. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll continue to have the conversation and report back how that's going this year, but.
Are they working on their peers? SU wide?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they are. Which they've been asking for, so.
And then, and then when that happens, you know, in, in other areas, they can. Where there isn't purchased curriculum, they can start sharing some of the assessments.
Yep. That's the goal.
Because some is, as an educator, some of the assessments is the most. One of the most difficult things to create.
Yeah.
And the most effective tool. To educational transition and transformation is assessment, which is why no child left behind is so damaging.
Yeah.
Anything else on this? You have one more thing.
Oh, yeah, just get to one more thing.
Okay, I'm just going to jump to this last thing, um, so in, um. In conjunction with the work that we're doing around, um, you know, those, the P P I's and things like that. One of the things that's come down from the state is they want a, a graduation portfolio. So all of those P P I's that we have listed, um, for each department. For a student to graduate. They need to show proficiency. In each of those P P I's at some point in their four years of school. So what we are working towards and what we have been building on is, um. One, is that within each, uh, department. The, and within each class, so it's, we're breaking it down class to class, um. Each department needs to outline their specific, their specific proficiency tasks. That connect with those specific P P I's, so what they're doing is they're essentially, the expectation is that. Um, there are specific proficiency tasks, um, that are geared towards. Students proving proficiency within that specific P P I. And within each department, they need to hit it, well, at least once throughout their high school career, with the idea being that. With each of them, they should have multiple opportunities. To hit it throughout the course of their four years of school, so as an example, you know, in, in social studies, we have one that's, um. Change constant in context, understanding change over time, well. They're going to hit that civics, they're going to hit that U S system, they're going to hit that, you know, when somebody elected courses at a literate. So what we are, what we are tasked to do is tracking each of those, um, all of those. Uh, P P I's that those students are being asked for proficiency in. And each student is essentially, there's, there's kind of two pieces to it, one, they're essentially going to have. and each student is essentially, there's, there's kind of two pieces to it, one, they're essentially gonna have, I don't wanna call it a check sheet, but it's gonna be something a little more elegant than that, but they are going to have to have proved in every single one of them. And then they are also, um, and that's more or less just saying, okay, hit it, hit this PPI, hit this one, boom, 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 boom. Right now, I am still in the very early stages of implementing this, um, as of now, I am solely responsible for, for monitoring that for, um, you know, getting the evidence that the kid completed it, tracking that they have done it. The plan is for this year to explore platforms, potential software, I've heard, you know, I've talked to a few people, I think there's some, there may even be a way to do it in Power School, so that we can better report it out to, to students, to parents, all types of stuff, but we don't want to, we don't wanna do that till we have a sense of exactly what it's gonna work like, so that's, that's the big goal for, for me this year, along with, you know, some people I'm working with on this, to develop a system that makes it easier so that the students can see it, and they can also help track themselves, and the parents can see it as well, so they know, um, and then along with that, they are also going to create a, a bigger graduation portfolio at, that they will be responsible for as seniors, um, you know, sharing out, you know, whatever kind of format, you know, we decide, um, where they're gonna highlight, um, some, you know, maybe they're the proficiency tasks they're most proud of, um, you know, kind of at least one, one in math, one in science, one in history, kind of making sure that they're sharing something with each of them, um, their PLP will be in that graduate portfolio, the career pathway project, we know portfolio, other things, you know, so it's just kind of a, um, a culminated project, bringing everything together that they've done as, um, you know, in their time as a high school student. Now, this is a, we're in kind of a soft rollout, we're doing a modified version with the class of 2028, which is our current sophomores, and it's a full rollout to all, uh, to the freshmen, so the freshmen will be responsible to making sure it's completed by the time they're seniors. Our current juniors and seniors are not responsible for completing. Um, so we have still, you know, this is very much still in its infancy and we're gonna be working through it with um, our current freshmen and sophomores, um, as things progress.
And this was the thing that, um, uh, this replaces the capstone, is that right?
No, this doesn't replace the capstone, the career pathway project replaces the capstone.
Okay.
Um, the career pathway project is, um, replacing both junior seminar and capstone, it's actually, it's really kind of combining them, one bigger project that the completed is juniors. This graduation portfolio is, uh, it's new, uh, but the reality is, is it's, it's new, but it's actually not, it's not anything the kids haven't already done, because it's all the work they do in their core classes, it's their PLP, which they do anyways, it's their career pathway projects to do anyways, it's really more, let's take all, all the work you've already done, bring it all together and share. That's sort of, that's sort of the idea.
Kind of, it's like a high level kind of self-reflective exercise.
Ideally, yes, we still. No, that won't take place until it would be two years, when the current sophomores are seniors, that will be the first time it will, so that'd be what, 20?
Twenty seven, twenty eight?
Yeah.
Go.
That, I think at some point, um, kind of go over vocabulary, because that, that's one thing that's really confusing me, because the way I envision is that you have assignments that score PPIs, and the PPIs score the proficiencies. And so when you use assignments and proficiency tasks, that's confusing, because when you look at graduation-based proficiencies, that's something very different than assignments, and so conflating those two terms can get confusing, and so, um, and I'm, I'm also confused about having, um, using the, a PPI as, as a proficiency that you have to demonstrate, because I, my assumption would be that each senior would have to have demonstrated proficiency towards a graduation proficiency and not a PPI. So are you using PPI as a vocabulary to replace graduation proficiencies? Or are you using as, as a, as an indicator?
The PPIs would be, if I'm correct, would be replacing, well, would be replacing graduation proficiencies, they are the graduation.
But you can't replace the graduation proficiencies unless they're actual proficiencies. Are they gonna be proficiencies? Because the PPI you showed was not a graduation proficiency. Graduation proficiency is a very broad, large buckets, performance indicators are individual, different small nuggets. And so when using a proficiency-based system, you kind of have to then hierarchy which is which, and then stick to that. So I, I guess what I would like to see at, at some point is real-world examples of what a PPI is, what a graduation proficiency is, what an assignment is, and how they, how they all relate to each other in a logical, uh, proficiency-based way. Right, yeah, so these are, these are, um.
They're calling the critical proficiencies of this, and this is driven by the state work.
Right, but, what are the?
Yeah, I can share it with you.
Okay, and so.
And I think we've done one for each.
Yeah, so here are the performance indicators, so these roll up to this.
Yes.
So these are what students should be demonstrating
Correct.
in their, um.
Does that help?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we can just make sure that graphic.
Yeah.
And I, I, I think what you'll find is that SISs are notoriously difficult to try to store multi-year data and get it out.
Yeah, yeah.
No, yeah.
Because they're, they're, they're bucketed.
That's like, one of my biggest tasks is figure out which is going to be the most efficient system, and I'm not saying that Power School necessarily will be, it's just, I want to, right now, it's just, I'm watching everything, and long-term, that's not.
The only successful school that has done it used Tableau. But you don't use Tableau, so I would closely work with your data visualization company that you can create buckets in, multi-year, and then you can display that out, so, um, and that is your data visualization is the same as mine, I just can't, we just started it. Edge of climate.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so edge of climate, you're able to input buckets manually and tag them to multi-years to students, so that's what, um, U thirty-two did. They used an outside data visualization to, uh, track students grade nine through twelve, their proficiency-based, uh, graduation standards.
Yeah, I'll get you this, they're all completed.
Yep.
Um, we'll send them out.
Yeah, as much, as much visualization and sort of.
We have one for each subject area.
Yeah, there's a, actually, I think if you go on the AOE website, I think that one's just all done listed there.
Yep.
They do, but we made a couple of tweaks on ours, they're a little bit different.
If we can put our, our modified versions there, just for.
Yeah.
Anything else for your presentation, is that?
No, that was it, does anyone have any other questions?
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
All of the questions.
Yep, no, I think that's.
And sir.
And I got, and I got.
And for hearing our frustrations.
Been this role for months, so I'm doing my best, but I got lots of, lots of them, so.
Yeah, no, and I, I appreciate it, I mean, it's, it's something that's worth, uh, taking with time on to, to go over, um, it, it is confusing and it is, it is frustrating, um, I, I do write, I mean, I saw some of the works on the, uh, proficiency-based graduation, uh, like getting teachers together, I appreciate that amount of work he's gone into it, and my, my sense right now is that on the back end where that hard work is happening, a lot of things are coming together, a lot of things are making sense, I think this is where, and, and my, the thing that I'm seeing that I think administration should be aware of, and I know you are aware of, but if, if this is confusing to the board, or we have some lifelong education professionals, I mean, I, I work in healthcare education evaluation, um, and I understand seventy-five percent of this, and I'm still kind of trying to rock the other bit of it, um, hearing some of that parent perspective, we're, we're doing, doing this kind of sea change of, just in the lexicon alone that we're using, I mean, we're looking at all this, we're not talking about assignments and grades and the, in the way that we did. And then to Bill's point earlier, when we're sort of getting a little bit more fluid with some, some real foundational educational concepts, like format and some of the assessments, like it, it starts to get even more confusing, so I think, I think there just needs to be really sustained focus on, on effectively communicating this to our, you know, I would say to our parents first and foremost, because that's fear-borne, with the people who are gonna be looking at this and really need to understand where the gaps are happening with your, with your learners, so that you can interpret on your end, um, so that's, that's my kind of, like, high-level takeaway.
I can see that in the bond with all of you, and the, and the conversations like throughout these departments and stuff, that's one of the key themes, it's like, teachers want to be able to better explain what's happening, why things, so that's a driving force for them too, so like, you know, I know sometimes it may seem like we're, we're off doing our own thing, but like, we want, the teachers want that too, because it, it's tough for them when, when they're asked a question and they're, they don't want their answer to be confusing, so. So we're, I can vouch for at least the high school staff, that the work that we're doing, that's a key focus of it. It's trying to make it easier for the parents and the students to understand everything that's, that's.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that work, and then again, like, on the theoretical side of this, I, I completely like, I, I get the proficiency-based graduation, being able to reflect on that, and I, I really like the idea of having students do that self-reflection and saying like, yeah, I did all of these things that, that touch on this proficiency, here's the one that was most meaningful to me, here's the one that I want to report out on at the end of my experience in school, um, but, you know, just when, when you're, when you're changing language like that and changing, like, shifting the framework, um, you know, it's just, it's, it's always gonna be a challenge, I'm glad, glad that there's focus going into it, I just know there's gonna need to be sustained focus. And the sooner that, I think, all of us at this table are able to explain it in clear, comprehensible terms, the easier it's gonna be, you can get that word out further.
And I think the portfolios are, uh, used by a lot of states that have proficiency-based learning or mastery as kind of evident, you know, better evidenced than grades.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve, thank you so much.
Okay, so we are on to, are we at Act Seventy-three update?
Well, yep, I've got a quick report for you, it's still part of the admin report.
Yes.
I'll be very short, because I know we're short on time, I just wanted to, um, share a little bit about the opening of schools, we had a wonderful new teacher onboarding, we had two days, we had nine new, new teachers across the SU, which is, um, a gift, having only nine was really nice, we had two at Heartland, two at Weathersfield, and five at, um, Mount of Scottney, um, specifically Windsor, Albert Bridge had no new hires this year, so, uh, we did a lot of work with our new teachers, um, curriculum work, some tech work, they, they had time with the union, they had time with their mentors, they had time trying to figure out the new licensing system, which is also throwing a wrench in, um, what we're doing, Jennifer did an amazing, um, work, little workshop with them on, um, trauma responses and collaborative problem solving, so, um, it was a great two days and a good really positive group of, um, new staff. Um, we get our welcome back with all staff after the teachers had a couple of prep days to get their rooms ready. Um, we had work with, uh, curriculum and our food service director, Ian, gave a, a really moving, um, report on where we're at, where we're headed, you know, no more chocolate milk Monday through Thursday, I mean, he's got some real
A lot of research.
Important goals, yeah, so.
Information.
Yep.
That he shared.
It was great, and then he, and then he fed all of the staff, um, lunch for, for the two in-service days and, um, didn't, they did an amazing job. Um, so that went well, um, again, I shared a little bit earlier, we've had our, our teachers in grade level teams working on, um, common assessments and getting in, in K five, getting that work done. We had our, one of our instructional team leaders do a presentation on a science of reading to all our K fives, um, teachers and support staff, so just overall, um, a lot of, um, good work that happened, um, this is, this is just pictures Kate alluded, I think, or mentioned in her, in the, in the first slide of the report, that we had some student leaders coming together and they planned the first three, parts of the first three days in high school, and so those are just pictures of the kids planning and, um, some of the activities that they, that they did, um, in grade level, um, groups, I believe, which was really fun. This is the, um, just pictures of the, of the presentations around the behavior system that, that have happened at the middle level, the high school, Tracy did individual, so I didn't get to all of those, but, um, the caregiver, so I, we centered her in the caregiver presentation in the photos, um, I, this is just, uh, to inform you, the district quality and EQS standard, self-assessment rubrics are, um, supposedly, we're gonna have them in our hands in the next couple of weeks, and this is a beta test, we're self-scoring, has to be done between October fifteenth and November fourteenth, and the rubric's gonna measure business ops, and Larry shared this with you a little bit at the SU retreat, Board Retreat, facilities, management, safety, governance, and the two parts of the EQS, um, that are, we're gonna get scored are the local comprehensive assessment system and continuous improvement, so um, we'll share with you that, you know.
I imagine we'll be looking at the governance, self-assessment.
Yep.
Cool.
Um, Act Seventy-three updates, I don't have a ton to share, but I do wanna keep this on the agenda, um, because I, I think we need to keep talking about it, so the committee met on August first for a few hours, they discussed, um, just a little summary here, what, what problems are they trying to solve, what are the goals, commitments that they want to, um, that we want to shape our decision-making, and from the goals, these are the possible, possible decision criteria to use to evaluate proposals, and, um, so some equity, call, quality costs, and responsive government were the big kick, um, categories, so that was August first, they met again on the nineteenth, and I, I have not watched, I, I was not able to attend, um, the meeting, it was all day, we had new teachers, so I wasn't there, they just posted their minutes, um, I just, um, saw them today and haven't read them at great length yet, but they, um, they did request data from the AOE, and I linked it, because I just wanna show it to you. Um, this is on their website, so, uh, let me just share, this is the, this is the data that they are looking for. Just give my computer one second, um, it's an extensive list, is it coming up, Bill?
You're, you're asking me, like, I have some control of it.
Hold on one second. See if it works on the second try. Okay, here it comes, let me share this to him instead. All right, so here's the data that they have asked, um, that the redistricting task forces asked from the AOE, and I'm not gonna go over all of it, I'm just gonna scroll through and let you look at, um, all the things that they're looking for um, to, to help them in their decisions around redistricting, so it's quite an extensive list, and they need the information ASAP, so that they can do the work they've been tasked with.
In fairness, they were asked for this data at the beginning of the Commission on the Future of Public Education in Vermont eighteen months ago, so it, it's not, this is not new
Yeah, this is.
data, this is what they've been asking for.
This is the exact.
I'm still, I'm still scrolling.
And they were told no, we can't.
And they were told no, we can't get it to you.
Yeah.
And so they didn't bother to try to get any of the data.
Right. So, so frustrating, um, and.
Transferring for you, that's my job to get that data today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, no, no, I get it, I get it, um, so I, I just wanted to share that, um, they, they, um, I, I've heard they spent considerable time debating whether to rely more heavily on the data, which they're not gonna get all of, I'm assuming, or, or if they're considering taking preferences like districts that might be willing to consolidate, um, I believe.
To clarify.
Yeah.
Um, it's not either or, it's both. One thing they said was they, they definitely would, um, give preference to, um, groups of districts that, uh, had, had already speaking up in their own, um, in their own defense of already, uh, discussing, um, either collaboration or merger. And secondly, uh, there was a commission meeting today, um, and, uh, so at the end of that meeting, the last. And so at the end of that meeting, the last task force meeting, there was a discussion between Jeff and the task force about collaboration on public input. They, so they discussed public input for a while today. They plan to do a survey in a couple of public meetings, but they plan to do a survey. I spoke up at blank today. But they, uh, they heard from the superintendent of Burlington about how Burlington goes about creating an equitable budgeting process. And they are they're worried about Peter Conlin, who's the Chair of the House Education, remains worried about districts receiving weighted funding that don't, weighted funds that don't actually get spent where they're supposed to be spent. Like there's supposed to be a certain amount per student and they had uh, disabilities, FRL and language as the weights and pre-reduced lunch gets in Burlington gets twice as much money as disabilities or language. Which is counter to what their Act 127 weights actually are. Uh, which is interesting, which brought up the discussion of how those monies are actually making it to the student and programming for the student that they have been. They're not allocated to the student. They're allocated to the district. And oh, and Burlington reassesses personnel allocations every year. I thought that was, I wrote it down because I thought it was interesting, but they are, the redistricting task force is meeting on Wednesday. And then the commission just added three more meetings, one of which is nine to 12th next Monday. And then they just added two more meetings for the month of October because they have their reporters due in October. So, and they are, just as a reminder, they're tasked with, we've got four things, but mostly what school boards do.
Okay. One, not to, excuse me, you need to get through the rest of this, but one, one thing that I am not clear on, unclear process, I think, but when you say, this takes us back to early, what you were talking about. When the task force is giving preference, the districts that are choosing are actively engaging each other and starting to explore these ideas. What does preference mean?
Unknown. And also, also the
Sorry. Jesus.
He, uh, oh, but, uh, wait. Commission is, oh, the commission is supposed to decide about the structures. That is, because originally it was supposed to be only supervisory districts with some exceptions for supervisory unions. The world's rural school collaborative associate, whatever, RSCA.
What? Rural Schools Alliance, right?
Alliance, yeah, thank you. Community Alliance. They, uh, they have pushed for supervisory unions, but the mission has not yet decided on which structure or structures will be included, which I, so that really impacts those mergers. Because say, for example, our supervisory union and the two supervisory districts that we are having a meeting with wanted to form something, it would have to be a supervisory union. Right? But if they banned supervisory unions, then
We would probably be forced to be one big district.
Right. We would be forced to be one big district. We would have to do away with school choice. And there would be a, uh, you know, it would be a different negotiation process than than if we were able to just form a supervisory union.
So present in that conversation, I'll get you out of track here, but we're, you know, no, no, it's totally cool. Cause this is another, we did a lot of things for this talk about tonight. At the present moment, we, we are talking with the two districts or S, or the SU.
They are districts.
They are districts. The SU is talking with them about broadly some sort of cooperation going forward until the commission decides what that structure looks like. We can't really, we, we can brainstorm a little bit, but we can't start even conceptualizing plans in any direction because they have to give us that. At which point the task force could give us preference to, preference to something.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think I, we, for full disclosure, we are, we are planning to meet with the other two districts on September 18th. And we'll send out an agenda about it, but I think what, what we're going for is a discussion of whether we agree in principle.
Yeah.
And everything else is a detail that doesn't matter if we don't agree in principle.
Yeah. And that's what I'm kind of, I, I appreciate you kind of reframing it that way. That's what I was getting to is that we not only is it too early to make those kinds of decisions in that conversation, but we, we are, there are constraints that do not even allow us to think about those decisions because we don't really know what sort of paradigm we're moving into until group A makes that decision and then group B. The, and this is not on you at all. It's I, I feel like the amorphous, we will get preference to something is, uh, I, I, I will forward to finding out what that means.
Well, they said there have been a number of, at the last redistricting task force meeting, there were a number of districts and supervisory unions that had sent in letters already asking for this merger to take place. I don't mean a number like it wasn't, you know, 15 or anything like that. It's a small number.
Sure.
Like fewer than five.
But folks who are having conversations.
But they, but they had written, they had written and they, they read their letters out in the beginning of the meeting. And then, so I asked at the end whether that was advisable. And they said, uh, you would love to know about any discussions that are already going on.
So I, I guess, and I appreciate that, Elizabeth, that, and I guess it's hilarious. It sounds like the preference is almost more like the state will likely prioritize making some of those changes in groups of existing structures, educational administrative structures that are already having conversations and have may have agreed that they want to work together.
Yes.
Okay.
The question still remains. I mean, just, I, I, again, I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to say that the question still remains, which we talked about during our retreat, whether all of these things will come together adequately such that it will follow through to its next step. So I and other people have, uh, decided to attend all of the meetings and say at every meeting, couldn't these things be addressed by BOCs? If we had a functional agency of education that actually supported our administration's staff and students, wouldn't that actually reduce some of the cost actually? And, uh, slow this train down. Because this has to go at the speed of trust and trust takes a long time to build. And so we're, we've been going.
Well, there's one other thing that you could suggest is that a lot of the main goal is more students under fewer roofs. If you create actual statewide construction funding based upon mergers, that would be a, a more long-term slower paced, effective way to create mergers.
But the truth is that this is actually in service of getting to the funding formula. It's not about more students under fewer roofs. It's actually about the funding formula. And which is not vetted.
Right, but.
But, but it actually, like the funding formula does, doesn't exist without this happening. And that's what the governor's administration is really ultimately interested in.
Which he shouldn't be, but anyway, it's another.
Well, I appreciate your diligence and advocacy on that point, Elizabeth, because I think those are all, personally, I think those are all really good points. And I guess I'll, I'll voice here, right up in voicing everyone I talk about this. I, I think that the timeline that has been before this legislation is is unserious. I don't think, I think that it's, it, it doesn't reflect the reality of the kind of change management that you have to engage in to do, to make this kinds of transformation on scale. So I won't editorialize anything beyond that, but I, I think there's a lot of good conversations, hard work being done, but the idea that this is going to have that, what is it by December, there will be clarity on how this works? And I mean.
The maps will be drawn.
Sure. All right.
Theoretically, theoretically.
Um, Bill, before we close, I, I'd like to point out that the Parent and Guardian update sent on September 5th has a blurb to parents, which has brought my anxiety down considerably because it's, there's a section that calls changes to the grading system.
Yeah.
Which is understandable, logical and follows the type of proficiency-based structure that I kind of would expect. And so it just makes me feel much better that this blurb is parent-facing and it makes sense.
And it makes sense when you read it.
It makes sense as a parent and as an education professional. So, so, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you chiming in. Given our discussion tonight, we maybe just like even copy paste that into our, into our documents service meeting.
Yes, into the, into the notes.
Yeah. Awesome. Thanks for, thanks for fun, Bill. All right. Act 73 update.
We, we did that. Yep.
Beautiful.
Thanks for helping, thanks for helping with that. And going to all the meetings. I can't go to all of them.
All right. So end of your discussion, follow by motions.
And that was the other thing is that I promised the people who, the board members who were planning to attend that meeting on the 18th, that I would send out an update on the various task force.
Is that your carrot?
No, but I'm, I think I'm the only person in this area who
Does it?
I know that I'm the only person in this area who attends all of them.
Greatly appreciated because it is, it is a wash. All right. So we had our Power School Google Classroom presentation. Bill, you kind of kicked off any further discussion, which is that there is a resource. We're going to put it in the minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Awesome.
Okay.
Yes, very wonderful. And I, yeah, and that'll, that'll definitely help my brain too. Cause I think it does get a little weedy when we talk about this year, but I think that seeing how that is being distilled and communicated to our parents is incredibly helpful. All right. I know there's no motions needed on that. We have community dinner. End of your discussion.
Wait. We have a motion about the
Yep, I got it. Community dinner, the entire discussion is that that is the date community dinner is happening. I'm saying the date, November 6th. Nancy, I know that you, you might have a conflict, so that's totally cool.
I thought you only had, were doing one in February, but then you, now you're doing two.
Yep. So I think, I think we had talked about it and you said that this one wasn't going to work for you. So if you're, if you're unable to do it, that is completely fine.
Do people mind if I bring meat?
No.
Meat's great. Uh, that, so conversations about. So I literally, we were running low on time here. We don't need to talk about what we're doing in the setting that is planning. We can do it via email or offline and so other form. I'm just saying the date to remind everyone, put it in your brains, put it on your calendar. So in the calendar, I will email you and do that follow-up and we'll figure out what we're going to bring. Bill, meat's great. I think we'll, we'll sort that all out because we're, we're already on time. But a lot of good time to things that need more discussion in this space. All right. And then last, what we added as a vote from that earlier discussion. So I will make a motion. Do you mind, can you pop that report up again, just so I have? I will take it, accept it.
I'm just going to share my screen. Give me one second.
Is it a motion for bids or it, or to make the money available?
That's, I want to be clear before I say it. So is it to make it available? Cause we do have to put out RFPs and acceptance and all that after, but we are saying that we are approving the use of those funds.
Yes.
So that that.
Capital reserve funds. Yes.
So I will, I my brain is breaking now. Um, I, I will.
Accept a motion?
I will accept a motion. Thank you. I will accept a motion to approve the use of $230,000 from our capital funds for the Albert Bridge School roof, the theater remodel, screen electronics and the ABS elementary entryway asphalt projects.
I don't. I, I don't think.
A second, then we'll talk about it.
Jim. Yes, go ahead. I, yeah.
Did you? So Amy, Amy gave the.
All right, cut, discussion.
I, I, I think the anticipated cost of that would be more than 130.
More than 230, the total capital.
Oh, did you say, I, I thought you said 130.
No, I said 230. I was reading the 230,000.
Okay. My objection is withdrawn.
Okay. And my, my understanding from what Jim said is that these are just three projects. We have the capital funds to move forward with. They want to get going on now. I think that we, it's been established the importance of getting the roof thing underway now so that we're not you know, putting the building more at risk than it has been. All right. Any further discussion? All right. I will, for this one, I will take a roll call vote, starting with Amy online.
Hi.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. So the motion passes and those ones are approved. Fantastic. All right. Do we have any need for executive session? Okay. Uh, setting the next agenda. So it sounds like next, next agenda is going to be October.
October 6th.
October 6th. Yep. You said Bridgette's going to come back in December.
She's coming to the SU board meeting.
The SU board meeting in December. Okay.
Because that was a question, that was requested. We talk about grading and and so she's coming if Bill approves in December. Okay.
Do we, is there anything else we need on the subject we covered tonight in this space?
I, well, I, what I heard was MBA demo. We need that on the agenda.
Yep, for the behavior portion. Yes.
Are you talking about proficiencies?
For proficiencies. Yeah, specifically.
What do you all think? Do you want to, do you want to? Anything reported out next month on grading reporting? Here at Mount of Scottney? And if so, what would that be? What would you like?
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of hoping that Bridget will be able to clarify many of her questions at the SU meeting.
Here's my question. The, the systems that we heard about tonight, the grading reporting, that, is that an SU-wide practice?
It sure is.
Okay. So I think with that in mind, focusing on that in the SU meeting might be more pertinent for now.
Wait, but I thought you said that was. Wait, but I thought you said that was happening in December.
It, we talked about it a bit ago and we looked at the S U agenda and said we could wait till December if you want to. I mean, if you want it earlier, it's, that's your, of you.
I think we should probably do it earlier because my anxiety has been risen.
Yeah.
And that paragraph had really, whoever wrote that did a great job.
Yeah.
Um, but.
Probably Bridget.
But we should, I feel like we should hear it before the end of the semester.
So you just tell me when and I'll
Yep.
talk to her.
Well, on I think it might be good to do it in here specifically on what's happening at the high school on this level.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's where.
So we don't have to bind down, not necessarily bind down, but
Yeah.
confuse the issues, even though I think it's good for uh the S U to hear where the entire S U is going, but I, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I need to hear, so because getting a high school specific, um, you know, maybe just getting Bridget into the next meeting to, to answer any, any lingering questions about that.
Grading questions from the board.
Yep.
Do you want her to create a report or do you want her to just come answer questions?
What are, what are?
My, my preference is to have her to come and answer some questions. I'd like to have a discussion about, sort of back and forth.
I think.
You got it, I will put it on for this, this is Mount Scottney.
Yes.
High school grading questions.
But Bridget, we'll try to get Bridget here for high school grading questions. Um, and then on for the behavior or monthly standing behavior, I believe the M B A will get a look at that so we can understand what the backend system looks like. Fantastic idea, glad it came up, um and then just generally look at, um, you know, I, I continue to really like that we have that month by month series of benchmarks out, so you know, see how we're, we're doing by then.
Or is it, are there any budget things that need to be discussed in October? I can't remember.
So Larry's working on the S U budget right now. Um, we have our first meeting this Friday, nine o'clock.
Yeah.
And so he has not started the local budgets yet.
Oh, right, can you see backwards under here that, that's what it was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But probably not quite yet, but, but it's coming fast.
Yeah, right. Um, last thing, are there any, uh, and this kind of goes back to, I got to get better at saying this off early in the meeting, are there any events coming up in our district that we want to communicate with uh Windsor and West Windsor um town administration?
Any district-wide events?
I, I, I think in some ways we need to, and, and I, I'd be happy to go to the select board if it isn't on the same night that we meet here to, to touch base on the field.
It is the same, it's concurrent, unfortunately. But I have touched base with them um recently and we're working on M O U to talk about um continued maintenance and Jim, before he left, I should have had him share this out. He is going to start treating this field the same way he does a Hartlands field and Weatherfield fields, field, rather, Fields field.
Yeah.
You got it, that's pretty good.
Okay, um, so he's agreed um to start that process, we're going to put a little bit more on the budget for this next round to help support that over the period. So it's being treated like four times a year for different stuff. So there's a irrigation, not irrigation, aeration, there's fertilization, there's, we're going to deal with grubs and stuff in the early spring, and then I think it's additional fertilization and seeding that he does. Well, he's on that, I talked with the town, they're working on the M O U on there and they're going to share with us once it's written.
But it's, I think costs should be shared though, because that's a community resource.
So, as I was understanding it, if we have it under the select board, because it's the same community paying, right?
Right.
Um, so, well, there's, Windsor's paying for part of it this way, right?
Yes.
Paying for part of, but Windsor's.
Right.
Correct.
Um, so if we go with the select board, the concern was then how much do we have to run by the select board for doing anything different out here? And they're not crazy about being that into the minutia of the school. They like the way it is, so it's going to come out of funding right from the town um one way or the other. They wanted to keep it as it is basically, so Jim would be able to support the maintenance on the field. Um, and we put it in the maintenance budget specifically for that function moving forward, but he felt like he had enough funds to do it now.
Um, yeah, question?
So, does um Windsor Town support, like take care of Windsor School fields?
No.
I think it's a different setup though, isn't it?
Windsor owns the fields, yeah, yeah.
Right.
So Windsor Schools maintain the fields.
But we don't own the fields, whereas Windsor School does.
Right. And so that's where the M O U would come from, so that, that would create a responsibility and
An understanding.
An understanding that the school would maintain and make decisions of the fields.
Is the town own the playground or just?
Yes.
Everything but the building is my understanding.
Yes.
Yeah, can I chime in here?
Sure.
Um, hey, um, Matt Frederick here. So Jennifer, I met this morning. And yeah, as she said, um, the town owns all the land except the land that the building is on itself and the building. So I'm happy to, to put on the agenda for you guys to meet with the select board as you want, they do meet on the twenty-second. Um, I can put an agenda item on for that if you want. But as Jennifer and I discussed, um, the concern is if the funds for maintaining the grounds have to come out of the general fund budget, that puts it back on the select board to determine how much is actually being done to those fields. So how much use they take, how much wear and tear, what the schedule is for maintenance. So like lawn mowing, all that stuff. And really, either way, the voters are going to be paying for it. It's either coming out of the school budget or the general fund for the town of West Windsor. And if it stays with the school board making the, the budget decisions, then West Windsor doesn't have to control any of that, which is definitely ideal both for the school and for the town.
And so, so I'm, I'm okay with that M O U going forward.
Yeah.
And, and, as, as long as the understanding if the school picks up the maintenance, then the school has the ability to have some level of control over usage.
Yep, so that's basically right now, that's status quo, right, Bill? Like, the town isn't dictating what is done really anywhere because that's always been the way it is. So as Jennifer, Jennifer and I talked about this morning, um, we'll talk with the town's legal counsel to draft an official M O U, which basically just codifies exactly what the status quo is, which is the school can control the ongoing stuff, but all the events on the grounds, and they'll pay for it just as they already do. Um, we'll just make it official, which it should have been done when the division first happened. Yeah, I appreciate the added detail on that, Matt, um, and I would say, just to get us kind of, we're setting the next agenda right now.
Yeah.
So, next agenda, can we get an update on the status of those conversations? Yep, absolutely. Excellent. All right, and I can go on our agenda, um, and just to get back to kind of where we started with that, so that is, that is something where we are, as a district interacting with the town, what I was asking is, are there any events or announcements that we want to specifically share with Windsor, West Windsor select boards? Um, that's a standing.
Homecoming.
Homecoming.
Uh, October third and fourth.
Okay, and yeah, that's before our next meeting too, so.
Yes.
Invitation, and do we have any um, do we have a flyer or anything for that we can?
Uh, Kate, do you do anything for homecoming? Oh, she did?
Yeah.
That's all right, I'll, I'll send out an email tomorrow.
Okay. She probably has a schedule of events, Davis, if you.
Excellent.
Do you want me to put her on that?
Um, I'm happy to be the conduit for that, I just need to get the materials. So. Yep, Elizabeth, something else for next agenda?
No.
Okay.
The dinner.
Um. Yeah, we, we want to talk about that at these meetings, so.
Oh.
I mean, that was, I, I was saying it so we all remembered it because we need to start.
Do you want to say it again next month?
I can say it again next month. All right, any, any other items to go on the next agenda? Okay.
Community dinners, okay, got it.
And as always, if anything pops up between now and then.
Yeah, we talk, yeah.
We'll talk and we'll, we'll get on there.
Okay.
All right.
Well, good.
So I think we are ready to adjourn. Uh, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay, Bill's got it. Elizabeth, Bill, uh, and if I hear no objections, we can do that with this one?
Yep.
Well, adjourned at eight fifty-one P M. All right, thanks everyone. That was a long one.
Yeah.
Important stuff, though.
Just in time, my battery was about to die.
I know.